The zoning application has submitted and resuming property to Iowa like industrial. Two, a third of the zoning is another suitable district. I should mention that there is no other district that allows for a landscape in operation to exist there. It's under Article seventeen seventeen oh one out of eleven for outdoor sales storage and landscape materials. That's the materials that I want to be the only permissible zone district for that operation. Part three denied the zoning application or for table the zoning application until adjustments can be made. That's typically used in, if you require more information, make your decision.
So like the resolution we approved, the research application has submitted. I'll get a second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Trustees, any discussion?
I think we've had it.
Mr. McGoughman?
Yes.
I vote no. Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Application passed. Okay, this time trustees like to make a motion to leave the zoning hearings. Do we have any other business for that?
No.
Okay, a motion to leave the zoning hearing and return back to regular meeting.
I'll second the motion.
We are back in regular meeting at seven thirty-six. Okay, fiscal officers not here for recording. My trustees, they can see. You had any more business?
Is the fire chief gonna be open this afternoon?
It's gonna be. Okay, seeing as there's no business, new business, trustees, we had an issue in the work session regarding payroll issue with the fire chief. I have a motion that we expedite a paper paycheck to pay the fire chief his payroll and start the research process to find out what happened with the monies that were wired.
Second.
Do we have any, need any more discussion on this?
No.
Mr. McGoughman, have you moved?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
I move yes. Motion passes. Okay, next up is resolution number twenty-one dash zero eight-two. This is Judge Township Board of Trustees accept the resignation of Crystal S. Dennis, emergency medical technician, single certified, effective at the end of this day in eleven two two thousand twenty-one. Move to adopt.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion, trustees?
No.
Okay, we'll call Mr. McGoughman?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yeah.
I'll move yes. Good, get our signatures on this. Okay, next up we have resolution number twenty-one dash zero eight-three. Board of Trustees, Judge Township, at regular meeting seven PM. This is a resolution to take care of discrepancies of payroll of various township employees and correct issues related to the emergency meeting held on ten twenty-two two thousand twenty-one. We talked about this in the work session. The fire chief agreed with what was in this.
Motion to adopt, resolution twenty-one dash oh three.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Here's the man. Another discussion? Good. Mr. McGoughman, I do it.
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
I'll move yes. Motion period. Send us down for signatures. Do you have any other new business, trustees? Go on, this is going nice. All right, department reports. Cut and flag.
Trustees, thank you. This is a report that covers the period from September one to September thirtieth. During that period, our crime decreased seventeen percent or a drop of fifty-four total calls over September twenty twenty. Part one violent crimes increased six percent, which was one additional call over that period of last year. Part one property crimes were down twenty-seven percent or twenty-five fewer calls. Part two violent crimes had no change. Part two property crimes were down thirty-two percent over twenty twenty, which was ten less calls. Thirty-five corridor, the adjacent plazas, the most significant areas where we received the most calls for service. We had one new community concern in September, reference possible drug activity in Jefferson Township. That was passed on to patrol cars to monitor the activity at that location and it was also passed on to the range. All of the community concerns were previously reported and ongoing. September eleventh twenty twenty-one, the nine eleven motorcycle ride, the new nine eleven motorcycle ride came through Jefferson Township. It's a charity ride in honor of, obviously, September eleventh. We assisted with traffic control as that convoy passed through the township. We had no issues from that. On September thirteenth, second month Jefferson crews were dispatched to the seventy-one hundred block of State Route four on a nine-one-one call. We had a subject that called into the regional dispatch center and claimed to have been being assaulted by other individuals at that address. He was reporting to the dispatchers that he was being held against his will. Upon arrival, nobody would answer the door for a period. We did have some smoke coming out of the basement area, which was quickly extinguished. One of the detectives, the actual detective that's out here assigned to Jefferson Township, who is also a member of the hostage negotiations team, responded, started making contact with some family members of the residents, was able to get phone numbers, started making contact with some of the individuals in the household. Over the period two to three hours, we were able to get three subjects to come out. The original nine-one-one caller was still inside. She was able to interview everyone that came out and obtain information that the subject was likely impaired on methamphetamines and had barricaded himself into the basement, so it turned into a swap call out. After several more hours, that individual still would not answer the phone, still would not come out, so they went in and removed him. And he was taken into custody. No injuries, deputies, no injuries to suspect, no injuries to witnesses, so it all ended good. During the month of September, we investigated eleven crashes out here. There was an increase of four crashes or fifty-seven percent compared to September twenty twenty. Out of the crashes, seven were property damage, three were minor injury, and one serious injury crash. One crash involved a hit and run and two involved suspected impairment. Wednesdays and Fridays were the busiest days for the month. Sure clear distance ahead was the most common causative factor, accounting for four of the crashes. Manning, State Route four, US thirty-five were the most prevalent roadways where these accidents occurred, with two each. We had one hit and run that I mentioned there before that remains under investigation at this time. We made four total arrests for impaired driving during September. One was on Germantown River Road, another on Houston Drive, and two along US thirty-five. And some of those are associated with those blitches that we were doing throughout Montgomery County with OSP and Dayton. Total sixty-six traffic stops during the month of September, issued twenty-nine citations overall, again, the four were OBI, eleven for other moving violations, and fourteen for non-moving violations. We had four new dumping complaints during the months of September. One was cleaned up by the suspect and three other incidents remain active. A total of eight hundred seventy-one calls for service, a hundred sixty-eight reports generated. Fringe services was called twenty-six times, twenty-seven animal complaints, and what else is it doing here? Suspicious subject situations and vehicles, we've recalled about and checked on forty-three of those. Just cover a couple things from October. Just in the last two weeks, we've had three felonious assaults out here. One, we have already ran through the prosecutor and charges have been filed. That individual was struck with a clothing iron. We had a felonious assault this afternoon at the Satan's Clubhouse, and we had a felonious assault at Vibes Lounge at fifty-three fifty West Third Street on the twenty-seventh, where an individual was shot in a club. He is uncooperative, and we have no witnesses to what actually occurred that are cooperating at this time, so that one will go away. I'll have more detail about those next month as it evolves, but that's all I have.
And that's all we have for department reports. Call in for citizen. Before you address the trustees, please read your name and address into the record. You have five, three minutes. Marion Perrin.
Marion C. Perrin, fifty-one forty Altramo, Dayton, Ohio, Jefferson Township, zip code four five four one seven. Mainly the reason I'm here, as always. We had a trunk or treat on October thirtieth. Jim, you didn't show up. Mr. Mann, you didn't show up, but Mr. McGoughman showed up and he got a chance to see the problems on the street. I found out we do have a road sign saying how fast you're supposed to travel, but people do not follow that. So road sign, I beg for it, and we have one. We have various people on our streets that live with it. Then we have other people that are not on our street that visit that house, I complain about a lot, that do live with it. And I'm hoping one day they end up, or the weather changes, and they learn not to drive that fast. How would you like somebody driving a hundred miles in your area, or your district, or your neighborhood? You have kids playing. Fall's coming, fall's here. We don't know when we'll have snow or something like that. We don't know if we'll have ice. How would you like somebody who's driving super fast run into your house? That's the biggest problem. They drive that fast. They do other things, but nobody believes me. Okay. They don't believe me about walking. I've walked this neighborhood. I've walked from Altramo to Ballard Derby, especially Derby, and everybody, "Oh, walk your dog." Other streets, okay? Most of all those other streets have big dogs. Those big dogs are not friendly to small dogs. But everybody has them, and there's no rule that will not rule them from getting rid of those dogs. So one of these days, I just say, the minute somebody gets hit, bitten, or whatever, I remind you. And you just sit there and look like Jim does, and it's half sleepy, and this man look like you're getting ready to take a little nap to yourself. So consequently, that's what I have to say. You will learn one day. You will see it, you will hear about it, and if the people, our child, gets bitten, you better get your wallets together. That's all I'm gonna say. And if somebody runs into their house, let's just say, you better get your wallet ready. And I mean that.
Was that speed trailer any benefit today?
Oh, it did, because I had a neighbor, it's actually in front of her house, and a daughter comes speeding down. And when she got close fast, she had to slow down to...
We'll be rotating it through there.
You know, but like I said, Mr. Mann, McGoughman got a chance to see. We had a trunk or treat on the thirtieth, and we had a lady that was parking to get out of her van to go across to the, I call it the fire station, but it's a road cruise thing, because we were passing out candy. And then there was another area for the down. They had a trunk or treat, they had a weenie roast and smores. A lady was parking a car, and another lady in a burnish orange van sped by her. So, you know, like I said, on my street and on other streets, not only mine, but mainly mine because of the problems, the people are the problems. That's what happens. They don't do the speed limit. And like I said, one of these days, it'll be too late. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Cindy Everett Lawson?
What do you want me to say?
Just read your name and address.
Cindy Everett Lawson, eighty-one Cadyment Lane. I have lived here for almost ten years. I own two properties on Cadyment Lane. One I obviously live in, the other is my rental property. I have to tell you, I moved here from the east side of Dayton. I thought I could be in a better neighborhood. I have more drug addicts on my street than I did on Huffman Avenue in Dayton. But I get less help from the sheriff than I do Dayton PD. We've actually been in contact recently because I grew up to the sheriff. Something's gotta give. Literally, something's got to give. When we get a sheriff, for instance, my tenant son threw a steel rod at my car, and I was told by the sheriff, maybe I should just sell my property. I've been victimized by a twenty-year-old, and I was told maybe I should sell my property. This doesn't help Jefferson Township. I'm not from here. I moved here on purpose. I moved here on purpose. My husband works for Jefferson Township. We intend to stay here. I just don't think it should be the battlefield that I left. I should not have to call, I hung up on nine-one-one because they never answered, and I called the sheriff line, and then I had to explain where my street was. We need a better communication. I know that ninety percent of Jefferson Township is elderly. They've lived here forever. They want to live here the rest of their days. But it's sad that we don't, we don't feel safe. I want to spend my golden years here. My house is paid off. I owe nothing to no one. I want to live here, but I want to live here safely. And when sheriff tells me I better sell my property as opposed to take, I'm willing, I've seen who did it. I can detail it now, detail it to you. I'm willing to take the time out of my life to go to court to stop these from happening on our streets, but nobody took a report. No one did anything. I had to literally write a letter of disgust to the actual sheriff to get any help. This is not keeping Jefferson Township residents. That's all I have to say. I'd like some help. I mean, one officer per shift is ridiculous. It's just disgusting. And the ones that come from Montgomery County that don't actually, they came to work here, they resent us. We're taking them away from their real jobs. And I'm just gonna say, my husband's battling cancer. I don't need any credit. I want to live in my house quietly and calmly, and I pay my taxes. I work here. I live here. I want it to continue. But I shouldn't have to beg the officers to do their jobs. Thank you.
There is no next up. Betty Weingard?
I'm Betty Weingard. I'm here, I work here at the Cadyment Center, five eight oh, Cadyment Lane, Newton, four five four one seven. I work with OSU Extension as the four-H educator. I'm here not only for OSU Extension, but also for Montgomery County Ag Society. Lori Page could not be here tonight. She's the executive director for the Ag Society. The reason we are here, we want you to be aware of the calls that our staff answer on a regular basis, at least my office entered two calls today. Citizens from the township are wondering how they can get ahold of anyone. They'll leave messages. They don't get callbacks. One solution that we would like to have, can we put up a list of your emails that's on the website? Some folks don't know how to get to the website. Many of the folks coming in are elderly and don't know how to use the computers and such. I mean, we offer to try and do those things. Well, it took us a while to find the website, but we'd like to just post that out in the lobby, even to post a list of when the trustee meetings are, so that people know, if you could have office hours one day a week, so that we could say someone will be here from, you know, even if it's only nine to noon. That would be helpful. I understand how crazy we put a wrench on things, but you know what? There are protocols in place now. Your citizens, a man trying to get an answer on his zoning question for nine months, they're so frustrated and they get angry with us because we can't help them. And they calm down once they're done speaking with us, but we just need you to help come up with a solution so you can help your citizens. That's all.
I'd like to have a response to. That bothers me a lot.
It does.
And this is not a new problem. This has been going on for a while, and I hear about it all the time. And we need to put a phone system in that works. We need to have somebody that phone window. For you to have to come in here, you're off work. This is your off time, and you come in here on your own accord to address us about an issue that we should already be taking care of. That absolutely just goes to my soul.
And if Lori goes in the hospital with her dad, she would be here with me?
We will make changes. This will change in this township. That is not right, and that will change. You should not have to put a list up there. We will put a list up of our email addresses and phone numbers. I put my personal cell phone up there. I give it the meeting all the time. For anybody watching on YouTube, it's nine three seven 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 six oh nine eight nine. I have an answer machine, and I will call you back. Okay? So we will get an answer to this. Thanks for coming in.
Linda Rowley, two four six South Diamond Mills. Thank you for finally getting our fire truck ordered. We were not here last week. Chris was in the hospital, but we're all better now, so we're here. My next question is, has that ambulance been ordered? I know there was some talk about grant this, grant that. We were awarded the grant, but I haven't heard anything about it in any meetings as of late, and I've talked to several people, and nobody seems to know what we're doing with it. Has the ambulance been ordered, and do we have a date that we might see that?
The ambulance, the ported chief, they are working on that part of that. Now, did he say that it has been ordered? He didn't say that, did he? He said...
I think for, it's talking July, August two thousand twenty-two is when we'll get it.
Is that to get it ordered, or is that to get it here?
Give it live here.
When we'll take possession of it.
So the ported chief in the work session, progress has been made, and the paperwork's now in front of the grant writer. It's past our hands. It's in her hands. She has to do her things. In three or four days, we should have a check. We should have the money. The paperwork's been given to her. In three or four days, that the grant money should be released to our physical officer. Once that is in possession, then the POs issue, and the order's made, and he's already talked with supplier Fraser, and the gentleman said it's true. We have made some progress on it.
Second question I have is, I personally have left messages for Justin, and Justin has not returned my calls, and no one is here during the day. And I, you know, I've been told that if you leave a message, it goes to email, and the people should get it on their email. Steve Wolf has told me that. Justin told me the other night in a meeting that that was not true. He never gets anything on email. Does that system not work? I mean, I know we spent beaucoup COVID bucks on the office. Was that something that was upgraded, wasn't upgraded? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, when I tell people, people call me and say, you know, I know you go to those meetings. How about this? I say, call the office, you know, call Justin, call the administrator, call the trustees. And, you know, everybody's like, well, that's a lot of good that did. You know, is that in fact true? Does it go to email, or? I don't know. I'm asking. We look like a bunch of idiots.
I've seen messages come through, but I also know that some of the workstations, they're not working. So it's a work in progress. But that's what it's supposed to, because that way we can keep a record of that going in. Which is since a lot of folks are on speed by his callbacks, and that's one of the reasons that we have that tracking mechanism to do that. But I've had them come through. Now, we made Mr. Mann a problem. Our wires are getting crossed, and we're getting messages for each other off the lines, but it's ringing through to the rank extension, so there's some glitches in that.
So how would you suggest the public get ahold of? The trustees, or the administrator, the fire chief? I mean, how do you guys recommend that the public actually get ahold of you? Because you've made it clear that you're not going to deal with any people in the office. I mean, the office has been closed now for over a year. Obviously, you know, that's okay with you guys, or it wouldn't still be closed. So how do people get ahold of you? How do residents that need help get ahold of you?
That's something that the board's gonna have to work out a little bit. It's been discussed on filling the position, but it hasn't happened. We haven't posted the job, so obviously, the comments tonight are gonna push, at least get the windows staffed. So that kind of brings that, pushes that to the top of the list so as to be...
Yes, sir. I've been in earlier, but I kept being assured that that was all being taken care of by the administration.
Okay, again, this has got to be corrected. We've got to get an answer to this. We've got to go through the system, find out what's wrong with the phone system. You, as residents, when you call this, should be able to get a response, an answer. Nine three seven 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 six oh nine eight nine. Call it. Nine-three-seven-seven-seven-six-oh-nine-eight-nine, call it.
Could I say one thing? Could I add one thing? One thing I know about calling, not wasting my time, like you said, call you. I get a response, anybody else, and I'm not saying any names, but I get no response. And see, I have grown up in Jefferson. My grandpa, my grandfather was a vet. I grew up in Jefferson. I don't get any response except you and the sheriff. Anybody else? Uh-uh. And I'm not hiring. I don't get any response, and that's a shame. That's all I have to say.
All right, trustee, trustee reports. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you. So I did attend the trunk-and-treat there Saturday evening. It was a good event with the kids. I had a good time. And no, Jim, we didn't talk to anyone about politics. It was strictly a event for the kids, had candy, out to a wazoo. I mean, literally just giving them handfuls of it. It was, did I get out there on the news that they said a top amount of money spent because of COVID last year on Halloween this year? I drove around, rode around the township, looked at some complaints that I received on the phone, since I gave my phone call number out, and I talked to some residents on Forty Road. There's a culled road, it has a bad hole in it, I saw that. I believe you're aware of that. Sheriff had bothered that hole, and then I looked at a patch that we did on Forty Road, and I'm not happy with it all. That road, that patch was done by hand, and just with general knowledge, anything over two, three feet, two feet, five, three feet tops, is not done by hand, that's my work, it's done with paper. And that was not done correctly, and I'm not happy with that patch. So I got...
Mr. Mann?
Okay, I'm sorry you have some problems with these calls. Sometimes when you, these calls are supposed to be coming out on your email, it happens at times, sometimes it does not. But if you will give me a few minutes after we finish, I will get your information and make sure tomorrow that you have a list, that Lori has the list.
This is what I made up from the website. It's strictly exactly what's on the website.
Okay.
With the emails.
We appreciate your effort. The point is, it's helping you, though, I mean, because you're getting, yeah.
Angry folks. We want to be good people.
And I want to thank you for taking care of it. Ma'am, you, if, I'm sorry you have some problems, but hopefully you can get with the sheriff and get yours to resolve. I'm pretty sure...